The hour of judgment, a trial will be held in the office or silent or library. You will talk to your neighbor, please talk outside. If you want to use your phone, please go outside, please. Thank you. Will you turn it off? Turn it off? Yeah?
So when they talk, the audience can hear them.
I think that has to be one of your... I didn't hear the gestures in those when he had the podium. I selected a podium.
We'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, March 27th, 7:00 PM. Our invocation will be by Frank Gonzalez. Everyone, please stand.
Heavenly Father, first and foremost, we thank you for allowing us the privilege and the opportunity to govern ourselves, and we thank you for those people who are willing to get involved in this process. We ask that you watch over us in these difficult times. We ask that you guide all of us in the governance of our city. But we particularly ask that you show the way and guide those children leading us in the actual process, so that their decisions will serve the city well. We especially ask that you help them to find a quick and lasting resolution to the Cantalana problem. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
May I establish form, Councilman Marones, Councilman Nieto, Councilman Guerrero. If everyone will stand for the question.
To reply of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, to our nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'm Frank Gonzalez and I live in Forestville, and I'm here as a concerned citizen. Following the 15th and 21th March sewage spills, we need to see tightly council actions on these incidents. This is imperative to reflect a public concern for the distress of our Cantalana citizens and provide at least a basic plan on necessary fixes. What happened is a serious matter. Two spills in the span of one week, and that's not all. We had another incident just last night, three in 10 days. These incidents represent great potential health risks, particularly to the kids who use the involved area, the culvert, as a play area. If you watched the 25th March Channel 4 news cast, you saw the gravity and the extent of the situation. And this, I understand, wasn't just out in the street so steep. Some of the residents have experienced contamination risks in their own homes. Some of the citizens are very angry about making the scene as a lack of proper attention, and this is fact for them personally. Because of this, and the fact that they have been through this before without resolution, they have become very skeptical and do not see dialogue or city management as being fruitful. That's a concern for all of us. It shouldn't be them and us. There's only us together. What happens in Cantalana happens in Forestville. Let's get serious about this. We should recognize these incidents for what they are. Critical and dangerous events that require immediate and high priority response. I would even use the word emergency. Three spills in 10 days and in the home risks. At the start, you should provide a full-blown briefing on what happened, what was done, and how do we prevent recurrences. At the same time, tell us what happened to the overall comprehensive water and sewer plant, for which, as I recall, we have hired or hired an engineering firm to perform. What is the status of USDA grant? Let's give our citizens confidence in our water and sewer systems, but the bottom line, let's fix the problem now. Before I close, I want to say that I only have good words for the city workers. They dedicatedly do their job with what they have and even risk their health doing this kind of work. It's up to us, the city management, to provide them with what they need to do their jobs and provide systems that work effectively. Let's keep our citizens and workers safe. Thank you for your attention.
Did you identify yourself? My name is Erica Chavez. This is Elva Chavez and Rachel Turminio, and we're here from the Catholic Daughters for a Day of Peace, number 2497. We're here to invite two mayor Garza and councilmen to our upcoming spiritual adoption service. A spiritual adoption service is a very special service where participants gather and pledge to pray for a baby in danger of abortion, a baby within the womb, as well as babies who are lost due to miscarriage. As part of the pledge, you become spiritual parents and pledge to pray for a baby for nine months. While this child will remain unknown to his or her spiritual parents, God knows who each child is. As part of our service, you will have the opportunity to name your child, so you can pray for your child by name throughout the nine months. Throughout the nine months, our committee will give information to spiritual parents about their baby's development in the womb through our Sacred Heart Parish full attendance. Our spiritual adoption will be held on Saturday, April 5th, 2014, at 10:00 AM in Sacred Heart Cemetery. And we do have some invitations. If we could give those to you? And I thank you so much for your time this evening, and we hope to see you on a Saturday. God bless.
Okay, anyone else have any comments?
Councilman, Mayor, my name is Freddie O'Peace. I live in San Francisco, Georgia. This incident hasn't just recently been there in the past, and, you know, we had to, you know, get other people involved to try to help us resolve, and the town is getting populated more and more, but, you know, there's kids out there, my kids, you know, were at work the first incident, and I go out there and, you know, they're out there playing with the bikes, they're all wet with all these pieces. I mean, just kind of upsets me, you know, gotta go take them down, carry them up, not only my kids, but the other kids that are from upstream, from different neighborhoods that don't even know better. I mean, appreciate it if y'all could barricade it, put some type of signs out there, let the city know what's happening out there, so like that they could also, you know, take care of their little ones. There's a, to me, I think that there's a lack of leadership out there in the way everything was conducted. You know, we just wanted a, what do you call it, just for them to just to hear us out. I mean, we feel kind of neglected. We live in the poor neighborhood, I mean, but still, you know, I think we all have what you call same rights as everybody else. But also, there's a, what do you call it, every time we try to ask questions or something, it's always one life to another life, you know? When does the life stop and when does something start happening, you know? Luckily, to my knowledge, I don't think nobody had gotten sick, but if they did, you know, I mean, I don't think I could live with that burn to my toes for other little ones. And last night even incident, you know, I mean, I mean, we feel kind of insecure, why does the police have to go out there, you know, on this incident? You know, I mean, y'all have the whole manpower, y'all staff, you know, stay sitting down out there. Who are they trying to protect? You know, I mean, well, we know that nobody's gonna be out there. With the first incident, even, you know, why does it take, you know, X amount of time, 24 hours before it starts getting barricaded? You know, I mean, it's just, you know, every time, just yes, you know, y'all limit Mother Nature takes its course, just let it dry out and let the rain pass through there, the watering tears it out. But I am very concerned about that, that I don't feel comfortable even in my work area where, you know, I'm always thinking about out there. So, you know, appreciate it if I could do something about it, you know, personally. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any citizen comments?
And we are listening to you, Mr. Ortiz. It's just not on the agenda, but maybe following council, we could bring it up as a discussion. And I think we do owe an explanation to the citizens of that area because, you know, I know they think, y'all come up to them, y'all were run off by police officers, you know, y'all are just concerned with what's going on, and to be thrown out by, you know, three police cars, I would use one police car out there. I don't think we need three, three police cars. I think all these accidents that we're having out in the city and the county, I think these officers should be patrolling the streets. I mean, I went out there, there was nobody out there but three police officers and city workers. Thank you.
Stand corrected, Councilman Gettio was there, and so was I.
Well, we're workers, city workers, and city, what I'm saying is, there wasn't citizens that were needed to be thrown out, and they're out in the street, and they're out looking what's going on past their area of town, and they want to look, you know, to see without interfering with any of the workers, they have that right, you know? And to be thrown out by police officers, it's like, I understand that the city manager was told them that they couldn't go inside the sewer plant, I understand that for safety purposes, but if, you know, if she could just say, "Let me give you in a minute," and I don't want to talk about it no more because I'm not on the agenda, but what I'm saying is, I will put it on a discussion because there's a lot of other stuff that, you know, that's been going on and dumping and doing, so I'll bring it back in later for discussion for possible reaction.
Mr. Turner, please compile a report from day one of the first incident as to what happened, what was the solution, how was it taken care of? Explain why the policemen were there. To me, it would be for safety. Secondly, the second incident, and then last night's incident, so that we can give that out on the 27th meeting. I don't know, we can call it a workshop, Chris, can we, to just discuss that one item? Or a special meeting just to discuss, because it would be two more weeks before we can explain them?
Yeah, there can be a workshop scheduled if you'd like to get citizen input, if you'd like to get the city staff input, and just kind of get up there together. That can be posted and noted and told at any time.
On Saturday or Sunday?
Mayor, I respectfully ask that you also give us an overall briefing on what our plans are to cover more than just the incidents over there, with the health of the sewer plant and our sewer system.
And that can be a workshop on sewer and water.
On what's already ongoing right now.
We don't have to say this.
We will be scheduling a workshop, and we will publish it, and it will be during the week, so that everyone can come in and you'll have a report.
I want to do, thank the city workers that made everything possible, that worked late at night and everything, that also no tablet. Concerns on the road. Thank you.
So we're gonna go on to item one, public hearing. The time is 7:20. The City of Forestville is holding a public hearing in order to have citizen input on the street maintenance ordinance, and at this time, we'll take any citizen comments. It's actually under section D, 4D, and your package, we got copies of it from the city auditor. And then at this time, we'll close the public hearing. Time is 7:22. Onto old business, number two, A, consideration and action to approve the meeting minutes for special meeting, March 19th, 2014.
May I have a second?
Second?
Second by Councilman Yendo in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please sit down.
Now we're gonna go on to number three, presentation discussion. Today's presentation from Miss Lauren Fink.
I was probably the last meeting with us as controllers to take in a position. We want to say thank her for all her service and hard work, and the credit those work for numbers that she printed for us. She made presenting tonight, her final report for you tonight, and I'll take this opportunity to introduce our interim. I know somebody will have met her. I don't think you had a chance.
I met her.
Oh, so she's here. Actually, today's her birthday, so we want to say a grateful to her.
Don't sit down, Lauren. I know we always have fun with this thing. I personally want to thank you for all your hard work. I know you worked real hard to get our budget numbers where they need to be, where we understand them, where we can get out of the red. You've come a long way, and you plan on standing on your hard work to continue getting into the blood and getting the city where it needs to be. So I personally appreciate your work, and I wish you well. Thank you.
Laura, I appreciate all you've done for us and all the help that you've given me as far as when I come to you for information. And I know it's been hard for you, because I know you've had to hold your tongue about times, and I know you've been trying to do the best for us, and I appreciate your time and I will see you later. Thank you, Lauren. Worked for you a short time, and I didn't think I would run you off, thank you. Thanks for all your time and effort.
Thank you, Laura, you're wonderful. We'll see you around.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I do appreciate it. Like the mayor says, I'll have a good face, and been a lot of changes in just a year or so. Hopefully, y'all can keep moving forward.
Okay, now we're gonna go ahead and just let her stay up there and give us our financial update for January 2014, revenue and expense fund balances, and our sales tax report.
Tonight is the January budget report, the fiscal meeting of the month, and as we've been doing now for a year, we present the financials, the second meeting of the month, and the sales tax reporting report, and the fund balance report. For the month of January, I want to start out with the general fund. General fund total financing sources are $1,289,432. This includes $350,949 of your, of course, of your M and L property tax collections, which is at 84.26. As we say every month, November is your largest month collections, this is no different. So it looks, you're on target for your property tax collections to come in, and probably about 97, which is 97 percent, which is what we budgeted. The sales tax revenue for the month was $102,750. That's an increase of $11,649 or 10.49 compared to a year ago in January. We talked about this too, and I remember on the minder that the current budget amount for sales tax did not have the increase that we saw in the previous year. So at this rate, it's on target to actually bring in additional revenue for the city as it did with the year that just ended. So that actually helped out the budget, the fund balance. And you'll get the report from the auditor for coming, hopefully, in the first meeting in April. So it's a nice, you know, to keep that in mind, that if there's some future things we hear in September that are emerging, we might have to, we'd be able to pay that with some of the sales tax increase. The general fund expenditure total, $1,67,881 or 29.29 percent of the budget, which at this, at this point, you're at 33.33 percent, because this is just through January. So you're right on target with expenditures in the general fund. With that said, we did do the amendment in January, so that amendment does show in those percentages. The payroll, again, we pay, at the 26th period, it's over nine, that's been paid so far. Approximately 34.62 would be your payroll line items. The, for the actual expenses by department, the general administration department, the legal fee was increasing in that amendment, and based on, and I've actually worked on February already, so we're on target right now with that amendment we had to do, which was an additional $20,000. Municipal court, they have basically salaries, and they did have a cost for the INCODE integration for the collection agency with Leinberger Goget. Leinberger should pay for that interface that's going to be happening. They are in the process of, they just did a warm roundup, so that's gonna be in the next couple of months, they'll be starting that integration, and it takes a little bit to get that piece flowing with the collection agency. So look for that, probably, I'd say about three months, maybe three, four. The police department, again, there's no major expenditures in the day-to-day operations and salaries. Fire department, at this point, has still not requested any reimbursement for expenses. They typically would do that quarterly, so we'll possibly be seeing one this month. The, just something that we talked about, and it's in this bill most that we need to work on, and we talked about during budget, we need to work on a contract between the volunteer fire department and the city. Currently, the city does cover their workers' compensation and all the vehicles and apparatus, with the exception of the legal one vehicle. Then the new vehicle they just purchased, that you've had insurance on through a separate company. Street department is just salary benefits, electric line item is the highest one, is always for streetlights. Again, expenses for that department, where comes the street materials, are located actually in your street maintenance fund, 415, and that's the, the public carry you just had would be the money that that ordinance is actually coming out of that fund. Currently, in the budget that y'all have adopted, you have $37,000 for just day-to-day maintenance, and very little as of January can be spent out of it. I don't have the number, but it was very expensive. Parks and Rec, again, salaries. The service department, which created during this budget process to help us track expenditures, is actually working out pretty good. The, we just went with, I guess it was December, I don't remember now. We adopted to go with a fleet card service for fuel. That process has been started in February. I think we're getting close to having the cards the way we are on that. Okay, so we've got a final approval, so that's gonna be coming up. That'll help a lot on the vehicle fuel lines, keeping track, and you can even at some point, you could put those fuel lines back into the respective departments once you get on them. The, also, that department, we had to, we have budgeted for computer, monitor, printer, fax machine, and fleet maintenance software, and as of yet, we have not started, we just started with Aaron to get the quotes for the computer and fleet maintenance software, and it's be something to look towards this summer as well, to get purchased. So, there's already nothing other chemicals, because it's coming here. Mayor and council, again, there's no money really spent in the month of January. There is, I want to mention, another election, we know we're gonna have to have an election. The budget currently that remains is about $15,000. Looking at what you've spent, I think you'll be okay without a budget amendment, but it is possible if expenses go up or if you have additional staff. So possibly you might go to the 15, but you do have 15 in the current budget to cover the May election. Any questions on the general fund specifically? I'm going to jump over to the debt service funds as it relates to property tax, so that being, the debt service fund collected current and delivered taxes, $322,091. I would give that in first, $381,913 or $89.55 of current IS questions. The, we had one payment that was posted in the month of January for the police department, and that was $30,000 in principal and interest was $1,200. You'll be seeing in February, you have one payment, and then March, you'll see the remainder for interest for your 2008 certificate obligation, your 2010 general obligation, which is the refunding. We also put the 2008 debt out at Civic Center, and the 2010 Bank of America, this year is the last payment you make, or gonna be making with that loan. That loan was for police car and equipment at the Civic Center, which is why it was only a five-year note, because you don't want to buy equipment at your Civic Center with a 30-year note, so that was the right thing to do. Any questions on debt service? Water and sewer fund, the financing sources total $612,206. It's still early in the year, gonna start seeing revenues increase quite a bit with your March, milling March, which I like to show up in April. Currently, water and commercial revenues are $370,690. Sewer residential commercial revenues are $100,000. Sewer residential commercial revenues are $188,898. This, these amounts are the ninth month of your billing when you did the rate increase in April 2013. We have it on the agenda tonight to talk about and possibly pass the ordinance to increase on the second tier. Again, this was based on the rate study that was performed. And we'll talk a little more about that, which, one of the things that the rate study was taking into account for the second tier is the sewer plant and the debt will need to be adjusted. So it has been, we are working toward that, so. The, let's see. The amendment, we did also do the amendment in January with the water, sewer fund was included in. Just to kind of remind everybody, there is a draw of reserve balance because we didn't, projects that were budgeted in the year before did not get, they didn't get started, we didn't timing. So the draw of $89,000, that is a line item in your budget. And it's actually, it's in the administration department? Sorry, excuse me, in your revenue department, I'm all right. It's in the very bottom, it says the reserve balance draw of 89. That's a budgetary number. It will never have any activity in your day or current period. So as the year goes along, the percentages will look kind of skewed, that you're not collecting, you know, total percentage, because that won't actually have an entry. So just to keep that in mind when you get down towards your line August, it may look like your revenues are not coming in percentage-wise. Expenses, utility fund totals, $419,049 or 20.29 of the budget. Everything, up and through January's been pretty slow. We did talk about it again with the budget amendment, the items have been picked up. The, so we started out, we had the wastewater mapping model. The first billing came in in January. We'll start seeing more of those billings, that was about $90,000. Then also, there was the FEDC project that we did with the city staff, did the connections for the water line. That was paid out, $12,425, but that is being reversed by the FEDC. And then Hospital Boulevard, we began the process of replacing the aerators. There's still quite a few of the projects that we're start seeing more expenses in February and March. Any questions? Really, it was not a lot of activity in January, December, January. But you're going to see, there's quite a bit more in February and in March. And then, as always, you have the fund balance report, and your packet as well, and your sales tax report. It shows you your history, by fund and by the, that's a five-year average.
And now we're going to proceed with four new business consideration in action to approve the December 2013 quarter. Okay, this proclamation is really put in the wrong area, should have been under new business, because it takes a vote and we have it as a presentation. So we'll do that one first, and the new business is the other. This proclamation is for the annual Rosenberg and Roder Cowboy Breakfast. Monica, do you want to read that for us?
Proclamation, Rosenberg and Roder Cowboy Breakfast. The Wilson Area Housing Foundation was organized to provide housing improvements for families who work from the school districts, social offices, for the purpose of improving the residential environment of students in attendance at the school for new calving. Whereas, the 12th Annual Cowboy Breakfast will provide financial support for the foundation with its ticket sales, live and silent auction. And whereas, breakfast plates will be on sale for $10 along with table sponsorships and premier sponsorships to support the activities of the foundation. Therefore, the City of Forestville Tensisip does hereby support the social services offices, office activities relating to families in need of residential assistance, and hereby urge the community and community businesses to support the 12th Annual Rosenberg and Roder Cowboy Breakfast, which this year will be located at Sacred Heart Parish Ground and earth-sciencable content community event. For ticket sponsorships, donations, of auction items, and for more information concerning the event, contact New Rosenberg or Brendan Paul. And that would be there, that the event takes place on Saturday, April 26.
Can I have a motion to approve the proclamation?
Is it listed as electioneering?
Well, the list is listed, it moved it down to new business. Moved it down to the drawing.
Technically, it does come to CNA, so it can be read and, I don't know if this is my class's thing, but since it's not on there, it can be read into the record like it was, but it can't be officially approved and approved.
Can or can't?
Can and can't.
Any out there that it could?
Well, I tell you, it could be read as the proclamation, there can't be a vote on it.
Okay. Item B, consideration in action to approve a resolution replacing the City of Forestville investment policy from April 2013. I don't want to do the quarterly report. Consideration in action to approve, this is A, 4A, the December 2013 quarterly investment report cash balances.
Decided is your quarterly investment report, this requires for the Public Funds Investment Act through the state. And you have in here, your, one page that shows all of your investments. This is as, balances in the bank, and the bank's required to publicly collateralize. And this is our requirement, is to show that they're publicly collateralized. The balance, all, total bank depository, again, this is bank snapshots. It does not mean essentially how much you have on your books. It's $2,595,342. That is all of your funds, with the exception of the full, the FEDC is not included in this investment policy. They do their own investment policy. I mean, assuming investment support. So all of these items, they were collateralized, you know, they have $3,520,000 collateralized. We started last quarter, we, it was really the end of the year, but it was 9:30 quarter. Including the cash investment summary of the balances, quarter than a letter. This is by fund, some of these monies are restricted and cannot just, you know, cannot be spent just on anything. The total, this does include FEDCs, total is $3,791,118. If you take out the FEDCs portion, that leaves $2,613,819. The hotel motel tax, which is $237,430, that's extra cash balance, street maintenance sales tax, these are as of December, as they have changed. But street maintenance sales tax is $350,210. Those are both restricted monies that can't be spent for just any general operations. The debt service, which is $584,160 of that balance, is also restricted. The water sewer fund, the rate increase, I wanted to show what those balances are because it's a large amount of money. But the water sewer fund is actually, it has $719,753. It's actually starting to get the reserves that it's going to need for the smaller projects and the upcoming sewer plant, which is, the rate increase is doing its job. So I just kind of wanted to, when I got here, the water sewer fund had about $280,000 total. So the, you can see the definite improvement. The general fund, again, is still in Solomon, so it is at a negative $39,565 as of December. And it's going to stay that way probably for another year, so. Any questions on the new funds or?
Now we're going to go on to item.
I don't know why we did that, okay.
You're ready to go on vacation.
I think a motion to approve December 2013 quarterly investment report cash balances.
Question by Councilman Angel, second by Councilman Will, in his own favor. Auto opposed. Clearances, there's zero. Okay, consideration in action to approve the resolution replacing the City of Forestville investment policy from April 2013.
This is related to the quarterly investment report that I just gave. Every year for the Public Funds Investment Act, Section 2256.305 of Texas Government Code, says that every year you're supposed to re-adopt your investment policy. You also, if there's need to be changes, you would make changes. There have not been any statutory changes with this last legislation that need to be addressed. So you can just re-adopt the resolution, the current investment policy if you have it. The current investment officers are comptroller, the city manager, and finance assistant. I just told you that time, I was finance director. Those people are supposed to go to public fund investment training, get their 10 hours. And you have, if you come in and you're new, you have 12 months to obtain that training, so.
Does that happen?
Yes. Well, every two years, every two years. And you can split it, but I, it's a two-day class, it's easier to do it one time and not have to deal with it. So the city manager will show me to do that, and I think Tom does this. And then if she, if she, if I, the interim, by this time, you can forego that unless you wish that interim to go through. Because it gave you 12 months, she has 14 months.
So are we current on the training, or does it bother the owner that has the training, or city manager?
I don't believe that Henry does, because she's just, she just.
To get the training, one year, and so I'll be able to do that in a timely fashion. Probably continue education for Tom as well.
Mine was actually up in December, and I'm going to class in April on the other side.
Okay, can I get a motion then, if you have any questions?
Is the resolution in your end?
Oh, the caption. Well, you have part of the motion.
Make a motion to approve the resolution, the resolution of the city council of the City of Forestville text replacing the city's current investment policy and providing the effective date.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Yendo, second by Councilman Will, in his own favor.
Aye.
Auto opposed. Motion clears. And now we're going to go on to item 4C. Consideration in action to approve ordinance relating to water and sewer rate increases proposed by the Community Resource Group.
Yes, ma'am, it's the council. As Laura spoke to earlier, this is the second phase of what was recommended when you had the special consultant to come out when we started this USDA process. So these are the recommended for the Phase Two attached, so that is actually the exact report. We did, there was a slight typo in Section One, it says on Page One, it says the residential, first 2,000 gallons is 1750, and it should be 1770. It also appears in the draft, so you can mark it, I wouldn't make that change on the final. So just when you're going to do, review those numbers, residential will go from 1650 currently to 1770. 265 to 275 for 1,000, 265 for 275,000, depending on how many gallons you can use on a residential side. On the commercial side, we have the first 3,000 gallons, the increase is recommended from 35 to 45, the 275 for each per gallon after the increase, of the increase is 12,000 gallons. A flat rate of the sewer residents per household, to go from 1650 to 1750, and it is a small increase of 1,070. And then residential and commercial rates outside of the city are increased, as noted here, to 33 to 35 per house, 550 to 550,000, 530 to 550,000, for both, an increase of 12,000. The commercial gallons as well, from 66 to 750, 530 to 550 per thousand gallon, as it goes towards 12,000. Last but not least, the monthly sewer rates are going from the 33 to 35, important. The increase from 90 cents to $2, 20 cents per thousand, as it goes in increases, I believe, somewhere around $40,000 each. The draft, the draft ordinance is attached,令214004, we will make that one little change of 1750, 1770. The last phase, there were three phases to the report. The last phase that we have to do, the increase as recommended, is just a sewer fee. It will not be a water or residential fee, there's just one according to the report, the last final increase, they're recommended to do so. Do you all have any questions?
On Page One, item, the one anger center where you mentioned those 30 cents.
I'm sorry, on item nine?
For 20 cents, and that changes that change amount, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
I have a question in front of me, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Who are the Community Resource Group?
That's actually a firm that does water rate studies, and it was paid for by, through USDA funds. The city didn't actually pay for that, when the process was started with the USDA loan. It is not a grant, they're not getting free money from the USDA, it's just a low interest loan. That is part of the air, it isn't outside group. And I wanted to, since you brought that up, mention that when he made his presentation, there, there was some issues with, you know, we all know about the water rates, there was some issues in some of the tables. And there's two things, he's going to need to come back out and redo, I don't know if y'all should come back, but he needs to redo the rate study. USDA will probably actually require it as you get a little bit more into the process of the loan side, because it's been a, oh, you know, over a year. It's very possible, the reason that you have, that there's three tiers, if you look at your residential water rates, currently, your base is the first 3,000. And then your second base, second tier is 3,000 to 12,000, and it's 275 per thousand. And then your third tier is 12,000, and then we're 275. It's very likely that that will change. One of the things that he was having trouble is trying to delineate where your resident customers are on how they're usage. And one of the things that, the rate increase in here tends to do on higher level, people's water conservation, because here, you pay a higher rate. So it's very possible, when they do the rate study, that that second tier can go down, or it can, it can, it could vote go up, but they're not going to say it. We went ahead and put this here.
You're talking about the down of gallons, on the schedule?
You what?
You're talking about the down of gallons on the schedule?
On the commercial, I mean, even the residential, the very first, it's like $2.25 per thousand. And right now, they're exactly the same, and we didn't have a tier. So it was hard to, for our evaluation, we needed to see where your users are.
Yes, and based on that, and as you know, we're in the draft, that we may have to actually. that we may have to actually implement some water conservation efforts in relation to sprinkling of water and those type of things that we're going to take forward. But this will help us build in the right direction. And again, we also have to leave because we'll have our final numbers. We only have projected numbers for the USDA, you understand, so.
For what?
Possibly, I don't actually know it's up.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, originally, it was a number that was in the study, but you're still, yeah, that number is going to be changed.
It was a, it was a, it was a, just a proxy number. We have some final numbers going forward, and as our editor comes forward, Mr. Heinrich comes forward, we'll be able to do that. Now, the water modeling project is part of this, which is another phase of that. The energy study in four months, sometime in April, maybe before, you know, as to period this update, Mr. Heinrich's updating records to the water study, the wastewater study, and where it is at this date. He was given food for us to do the preliminary engineering reports, and so he'll have some of those basic numbers for you coming forward to see what we are.
Do we know when he'll be finished with it?
He has just some field measurements, we met with Andrew Grants this last week. We have to finish it, but it would probably be the second meeting in April.
So by the end of April, we should have the final report.
Only, we have the final report, they'll do the update on where it is on the sewer modeling project itself.
I lose your recommendation, Mr.?
I recommend that you approve this as presented, with one little change. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the ordinance relating to water and sewer rate increase as proposed by Community Resource Group, and ordinance amending ordinance twenty thirteen dash zero-zero-four related to chapter fifty-two sewer regulations, section point zero-two, monthly sewer rates, A and B, and ordinance amending ordinance twenty-